Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to our La Sura City Council meeting scheduled for September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. At this time, I want to call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the one of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands one nation, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Council members, you were all giving your packets over the weekend. Hopefully, you had a little time to look those over and reach out with any questions. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second, Councilman Huntington. Second, Councilmember Tui. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to presentations. Mr. Ruby, do you want to introduce our presentation for tonight?
I would, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, it was my distinct honor and pleasure to invite this evening Ms. Marion Peck and members of her family. As you all know, Marion is longtime resident here of La Sura and advocate for service above self, an advocate for personal wellness and fitness. She is the face of our Silver Sneakers program and earlier this year was named a national finalist for the Silver Sneakers, Silver Sneaker of the Year Award. She didn't win, which we're still investigating the results of that election. But Mayor Kirby would like to make a proclamation tonight, and if it's requested, I'll read the proclamation.
Please.
Okay. After I read this, I would invite the mayor and Ms. Peck to step forward, and we'll take a picture and allow the council members to congratulate her as well.
I mean, Mrs. Peck, the podium I'd like to head up here to the orders from.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This mayoral proclamation recognizing October third, two thousand and twenty-four, as Marion Wieland Peck Day in the city of La Sura. Whereas Marion Wieland Peck is a lifelong resident of La Sura, and whereas Marion Wieland Peck was the first La Sura woman to enlist in the armed services, serving honorably in the United States Navy from nineteen forty-three to nineteen forty-six. And whereas Marion Wieland Peck has demonstrated a commitment to lifelong learning and service. And whereas Marion Wieland Peck has a passion for wellness, demonstrated most recently by her being named a National Silver Sneakers Member of the Year finalist. And whereas, at one hundred and one years of age, Marion Peck continues to serve as an embodiment of the importance of fitness, service, and love for community. Now therefore, Sean Kirby, mayor of the city of La Sura, does hereby knowledge and applaud the service and dedication of Marion Peck, and hereby proclaims October third, two thousand and twenty-four, as Marion Wieland Peck Day in the city of La Sura.
I just want to add a few comments. Marion has for many, many, many years has played the trumpet at all her funerals, and she plays taps, being the good veteran you are. At a hundred and one years old, you do an amazing job with taps. I know it's digital, but it sounds nice whenever you do it. So thank you, Marion, for that. It always looks good when you do it. And I know you're not supposed to announce a woman's age, but once you get past a hundred, it's a badge of courage. So we're real happy for you, Marion. I, Marion, I just want to tell everybody one real quick story. I was coming out of church one day, I think last winter, and I followed you out, Marion. It was quite, quite cold, quite icy. And I was amazed at the grace you have walking over the ice. You walked over that ice like Christ did on water. So I, I was really amazed at how well you do on ice at a hundred years old. So Marion, we're very, very proud of you, and we, we wish you well, and we, we hope to see you many more years helping out in the community. Then I know you will. You take care. Thank you very, very much.
I think it's not behind the podium. There we go. Thank you. Just works out better that way. Less cropping. Thank you.
Are you blowing the whistle? Marion, thank you. Congratulations.
I'd like to remind everyone, I know Marion has a busy social calendar, but she did free up time on October third at six P M. at Legion Park, weather permitting. If it's not, weather isn't permitting, then we'll be inside the community center. But Allison and Jenny are here tonight representing our awesome recreation team. And there'll be a party thrown in Marion's honor Thursday, October third, six P M. in Legion Park, and the entire community is invited to come and celebrate how awesome she is.
We look forward to that. Marion, you and your family are welcome to stay for the rest of the evening if you wish to leave. We're not offended. We understand. So we want to wish you well. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Y'all be good to your mother. Thank you, Marion. Consent agenda. All items on consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the state council these two days in advance of meeting. These items will be acted on motion or in a separate discussion. These items must be council member of citizens' request, which then these items will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. Mr. Ruby, do you want to review these?
I wouldn't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Tonight's consent agenda is ready to read. The first item is approval of city council minutes from the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-four regular meeting. Second item is approving disbursements through today. Included in those items are disbursement of two items over twenty-five thousand dollars. First is to DGR Consulting Engineers, which is engineering, electrical engineering on the North Fourth Street, Cathcart Street, twenty-twenty-five street utility project, seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars, seventy cents. And second to the Minnesota Department of Revenue for our August, two thousand and twenty-four city sales tax, totally fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Item C and D, now that fall has come upon us. Item C, approved the La Sura Rotary Club Turkey Trot Request for Any Kind Services. They will be hosting a Turkey Trot five K as they do every year on Thanksgiving morning. And item D, approved La Sura Lion's Club Christmas Tree Sales Request, which is a consistent request with those approved by city council and agrees yours for the sale of Lion's Club Christmas Trees.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby. Anybody have any questions regarding tonight's consent agenda? Not, I undertake a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So much.
So Mr. Sullivan, I think first, and then Councilmember Wayne second. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to public comment. Nobody tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Tui. Moving on to the city administrators update. Mr. Ruby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will be the last time, hopefully, that I mention the Minnesota River Flooding Event update during one of my updates, as regular agenda item A B tonight will address the ending of the local emergency declaration. As I mentioned at the last meeting, Justin Nielsen and I were meeting with FEMA. We have a follow-up meeting with FEMA next week to discuss recovery and mitigation. Planning Commission met on September twelfth and discussed the future of the city forum and the future of the city survey. It was reminded, the survey is open through this Friday, September twenty-seventh. And the forum will be Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from ten A M. to noon at the high school and middle school. October third, six P M. Legion Park. Marion will be there, and it's going to be an awesome celebration. We've implemented or started a series of monthly meetings with city leadership, so it's somewhat tradition that all the directors of the city meet the morning of the city council meeting to prepare for the council meeting for that evening and discuss any number of departmental activities. This morning, we kicked off our first of a series of leadership meetings, which is all the directors and the managers from all departments and some supervisors to, to sit down in a monthly huddle to talk about the comings and goings of different departments and projects and who's new and who's hiring. Foster and Ryan were there this morning, so I, I think they'll nod right now when they say that it was successful, and then they'll tell you the honest answer later. But I think it was a good opportunity for all of our departments to share communication that doesn't just come through email. So it's a new initiative here. Charter Commission met last week. We had a really good meeting with the Charter Commission. And item eight C tonight will address the latest of their recommendations regarding the city charter. We're still recruiting for new members for the Charter Commission. If you know anyone, they only meet once a year. It's not a bad date. This Wednesday, I will be presenting at a conference in Minneapolis, the Finance and Commerce Commercial Real Estate Seminar. They're having a segment on planning and zoning and working with municipalities on the growing cannabis industry. And since the city of La Sura has taken a more proactive approach to addressing concerns at a community level and engaging in the conversation around the invitation of cannabis industry into the community. For some reason, I thought it was a good idea to invite me and talk about my experience working with our own businesses over the last six months. And so looking forward to that Wednesday morning. I would like to thank everyone here, all the staff, the first responders, police, fire, and the entire community for making our last week's celebration of Bruce Kelly's life a very nice celebration. My thoughts continue to be with the Kelly family. And finally, Chief Spear this last week was in Las Vegas, Nevada. She was being awarded the National Latina Peace Officer of the Year. So there's an organization, the National Latina Peace Officers Association, and they meet annually, and all fifty states are represented. And this year, because I was nominated and awarded Latina Peace Officer of the Year nationally, so very exciting for her. Next meeting, the council will be October fourteenth, and before that, we'll have a planning commission meeting. I think that's it for my list tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Ruby. Anybody have any questions regarding this update? If not, that'll take us into tonight's regular agenda. That would be eight A, two thousand and twenty-four first half financial report, which I think is going to be given by our financial director, Mr. Graff. Mr. Ruby, you want to introduce?
I'm happy to. Mr. Graff will be covering the first half financial report with the general fund, our special funds, including the airport, and then also talking about the enterprise funds. Giving an overall financial health presentation for all of those funds and certainly take questions as he goes through, but I'll turn it over to Ryan.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As an interested Ruby said, I'll take you through our first half financial report. Just quickly, ideally, the timeframe on this would be trying to do this prior to the preliminary levy once audit is final, but it didn't make much sense to go twenty twenty-four report before the two thousand and twenty-three books were closed. So we'll work next year to get that audit closed a little bit sooner and have this report prior to the preliminary levy. So that would be my goal for a schedule next year. I'm working on it. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, on this first slide here, just a quick look at the broader general fund cash balances for several of our funds that roll up into our preliminary levy. Just for reference, up in the top right corners is the fund numbers. I'll take you through what each, what each one of those are, and then at the bottom is the, the fund balance for the last several years, and also at, as of June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. I guess I should have mentioned before we presented this, everything here obviously is unaudited numbers yet, since we haven't gone through two thousand and twenty-four audit, but they are what are on the books right now. The one-on-one fund is our general fund. Two twenty-five is fire. The two thirty-five is the airport. Four twenty is our capital improvement fund. Four seventy-seven is our Highway one sixty-nine abatement fund. Six fifteen is the community center, and seven oh one is our I T fund. So a few items to note here. Now, if you look at the one-on-one fund, which is the dark blue, that's got the the top, top point there near one point seven five million in two thousand and twenty-three. It's a little volatile. It's down this year only because the biggest source of revenue there is our L G A payments that don't hit until July and December. So that's why you see a drop of eight hundred thousand dollars from the end of last year to June thirtieth. But that fund is is fine. We'll go through each of these funds in a little bit more detail in the next coming slides, but that's why that looks like that. For the fire fund, it's up a little bit, thirty-seven thousand, mainly driven by we invoice, or I shouldn't say we, we invoice, but most, we invoice the townships at the beginning of the year, and most of those townships, you'd like to pay that balance in full in the first half of the year. So our cash position is a little bit better than we ended last year, but it's still anticipated to come in on budget, which was a balanced fund. Nothing significant, not the airport balance, if the cash position is relatively unchanged. The four twenty capital improvement fund, we have had some airport capital expense that we're awaiting a grant for. That's roughly eighty-five thousand dollars, I think. So that's driving that fund bounce to be down. For the four seventy-seven, the Highway one sixty-nine abatement fund, we have been investing some of those funds as we wait for future projects that might happen out on the Hilltop Corridor. So that's why the, the cash position is down, but the overall fund is, is whole. And then for the community center, that is improved. That's driven mainly by our, our ice time is prepaid this year. So the Bulldog Youth Hockey Association has already paid for this coming winter, or a bulk of it. And a lot of our part-time outdoor pool staff, their payroll usually hits most of it in July first or after. So that's what's going on there. And then with the I T fund, it's, it's down a little bit, mainly driven by about thirty, thirty-five thousand of something of our expenses are paid full year, and then that's dragging that decrease there. So we can move on to the next slide. And there we'll have the oh, I think it worked. All of a sudden, it's working. All right, figured it out. Okay, so here, this is a slide here that pertains to the one-on-one general fund income statement. It's a, it's a chart that we usually show us during the levy and budget cycle. Some of the items, note off to the right, the L G A payments come in the second half. That's why the intergovernmental line looks severely unattained at point two nine percent, but we do expect all that money to come in. That's just the timing. Our permit revenue, you see, that's the second line on there. It's over a hundred and twenty-four percent obtained. You know, as we, we do expect that to stick. That's mainly driven by higher current revenue this year than we had budgeted for. On the interest earnings, you can see that's got an unusual attainment of seven hundred and fifty percent. All of our interest earnings from our, our bank account, checking account flow to the one-on-one fund during the year and then get allocated out at year end during the audit process. There will probably be, you know, that's thirty-seven thousand there. It'll be less than ten thousand dollars was probably what will be sitting there in there by the end of the year. Down on to some of the expenditures, our, our legal fees are sixty-four percent obtained. We have seen those fees go, go up, and that is at risk to exceed budget by a little bit. Similar, our zoning fees is, are exceeding budget due to housing redevelopment and rezoning projects, including all the work in time spent on the farmland sale is in there. For the streets department, it's at about sixty percent obtained. That's mainly driven by our Emerald Ash Bar expenses that we actually have received the grant for this. We just received it here in the last few weeks. So that was about eighty-five thousand dollars. So that's driving that high attainment here in the first half. Our unallocated expenditures line, we do expect that to come in under budget. That is where our our fund improvement dollars were, were set aside, so we, we don't expect to spend much of that, if at all. I think we spent maybe five thousand dollars, but that's was budgeted at a hundred thousand. So that will come in under, as well as our workers' comp and general liability insurance. Those numbers there are probably final there. So those, those will come in under budget. So at, at a high level, you look at this and we see our revenues thirty-four percent obtained and our expenses fifty-one percent obtained, where we're, you know, five hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars underwater, so to speak, but that's mainly just the timing of how everything comes in. Otherwise, the, the fund overall, without some, just a minor, you know, exceeding or improving budget is looking pretty, that's pretty good. These next two sites here on the, the other funds that roll up into the general levy. Not a whole lot to note here. We've kind of talked about a lot of it, but for the fire, it's, our revenue is, is up because we invoice for the full year at the beginning of the year. And then for our fire expenditures, they just tend to be skewed towards the second half, just looking back in, in time. So let's show some low attainment, but I do expect those to come in close to budget. Our airport fund, not a lot to note here. We, we have received three grant payments in the first half. And usually, I don't think we receive them that quickly. So we do show that we're about a hundred percent obtained there, but if we receive any more grants, I wouldn't expect it to be a real significant number. So the airport fund is, is looking good to be on budget as well. The E D A fund, one thing to note in the revenue line there, in other income, that's really made up of our land rental, which we've received the, the full year payment for at about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars. And then we, we do throughout the year, recognize that the loans of the E D A is made to several businesses in town. When they make those payments, they, their principal and interest payments come in, in the form of revenue, but we will move that principal, the principal amount to offset our loans receivable at the end of the year. So it's during the year, it shows a little bit of a skewed attainment there. And then a little bit in expenses, the property taxes went up, and we're a little bit higher than budget this year. For the community center fund, on the revenue there, I'd mentioned it before, the Bulldog Youth Hockey is prepaid for a good chunk of their winter ice time. So that is showing our, we're going to be a little bit further attained than if they had paid for it as they used it. And then in the expenditures, in the majority of the part-time summer wages hit in the second half. And then again, we have our fund balance improvement plan for the community center of about sixty thousand that flows into this building, the equipment return meeting, it's lying. So that's the number that we budget for, but don't expect to spend to improve the, the fund balance. So that's showing that low attainments there. Again, the, the community center is, is looking good to be on budget as well. And then the I T fund, again, I had mentioned before, all I have of the big material is a couple of the software licenses and our financial software that we paid for upfront for the whole year is driving that expense to be a little highly skewed here as of June thirtieth. I'll stop and pause right there. That's all of the general fund accounts. The next several slides will go through our enterprise funds, but I don't know if anybody has any questions now or can save them for the end?
Anybody? Okay, I'll keep going.
So, and similar to the general fund here is a chart of our cash balances for all our enterprise funds. Our six oh one fund is our water fund. It's maintaining a, a strong position here. The six oh two is our sewer fund that is something we've been working on for, for quite some time. It does have a negative cash position. But it has been making improvement over the last few years and is continuing on that path so far here in the first half of two thousand and twenty-four. Six oh four is our electric fund, and that is also improving. And the six oh five is the stormwater fund that we are continuing to build up that balance, mainly for future projects with our storm water system being a little bit down level and, and having plans to, to fix that. And then the six oh seven fund is our recycling and refuse. So there's not usually not a whole lot of change there in that fund. The income statement here for the water fund, just one major thing to note, you'll see that the, the revenues in total are forty-eight percent. Our expenditures are thirty-six percent, so it is showing that we're in a pretty good position in the first half, but we did budget to pay cash for about nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of capital projects that we just haven't implemented yet. They're, they're still out there, and I've seen some of them spent now here in the second half, or if they push out to twenty twenty-five, but it's not not any sort of operational saving. It's just the timing. So if we normalize for that, our expenses are pretty much in line with, with our revenue. For the sewer fund, again, it's showing, you know, our, our revenue at about forty-one percent. We, you know, a couple of notes there in, in the revenue, we have only invoiced our significant industrial users for about five months this year. So it's not, it's not six, obviously, which would be half of the year. So that's giving that number down. And then we also, for our wastewater treatment facility bond that is due towards the end of the year, I'll talk about that in expense. But we do bill a bigger part of that bond, and that is in the reimbursements lines, that hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars would come, or a hundred and sixty-three additional later that this year. On the expense, we are seeing chemical spending down a little bit, and then we do have some dollars in the budget for a pump failure, utility allowance, just in case one of those pumps goes out. So far, so good. Hopefully, it stays that way, and then that, that fund will, or that line will come in under budget. Mentioned our, our bond for the wastewater treatment facility plants there, and as item number four is just due towards the end of the year, so that lining will come in on budget, and the seven percent is just the timing thing in terms of the percentage. And then we did, we are a little bit higher in our, in our capital outlay. This is normal when we, we sometimes will pay for capital and then have to bond for them later, depending on as we go through the year. Looking at how the sewer fund is improving a little bit, there might be a chance to just pay cash for those instead of having to bond, but those are things that we look at with, with all of the enterprise funds in terms of their cash position and, and how to roll it into the next year's budget. The electric fund revenues slightly under attained, but that's mainly driven by all of our summer rates from our financials. You know, it's from June through September or yeah, June through September. June hits our revenue in, in, in July. So all those summer rates hit in the second half of the year, and that's driving that down, and that's really impacting the, the residential and rural sales. On the expense side, purchase power, there's only five months reflected in this number for payments to N M P A. If we added another month in there, that would be close to fifty percent obtained. And then again, the electric bond principal payment is, you know, I guess that's now reflected in this number and, and driving that number down. So again, So again, electric is looking in good shape compared to budget. Stormwater fund, everything's pretty much in line here. There's really no items to note. And then recycling and refuse, the only thing not there is similar to the MMPA payment. This only has five months of payments into waste management. That's just a timing thing. By the time the books close for the year, they will both have twelve years of payments on the books. It's just kind of the timing at the mid-year. This here, this slide is just a list of all of the cash balances by fund. We've pretty much touched on all of the major ones. Some of the smaller ones and ones that we haven't touched on are just our debt service and construction accounts that vary depending on when their bond payments are due, how far along in the projects we are extending. So nothing really clear to point out that we haven't already touched on. And then, yeah, just in summary, the total general fund, I'd say overall, the first half performance gives no indicators to materially missing budget overall. There will be some puts and takes underneath, but nothing materially missing. We're continuing to focus to improve the fund balance positions, particularly the community center and IT where there are negative positions, but we have, you know, shown some growth, especially in the community center. And then the general fund is just making sure we have enough cash on hand to cover, you know, five or six months of operational expenses. And then the enterprise funds, first half is showing strong performance, and we'll continue to monitor these funds, evaluate the position of the funds, and they're affecting the twenty twenty-five budget. And that's the end of what I have to present, but one will mistake questioned on any part of that.
Mr. Graham, Mr. Dewey.
I gotta say.
Oh, I'm sure.
What would happen to that? The enterprise funds, particularly the utilities, if we didn't have six hundred and ten thousand dollars of unpaid bills? I mean, where does that fit? I mean, we're covering the cost of the electricity, and yet we're still strong here. If you were to take three hundred thousand, cut it in half, and put it in there, that would even make it that much stronger, would it not? Because if you're not getting paid, it's not showing up here.
Yeah, if we looked at that today and paid that between now and then, it would improve the cash position.
But you gotta be accounting for getting paid. I mean, it isn't, it isn't extra money. Then you know you're gonna get it, so it's built into the formula.
Yeah, we know it's coming, and it's a year behind, so it's just the same cycle repeating itself. You know, so it's it's there, it's in, like I said, it's not in the cash, but if you looked in the overall fund position, you've got the accounts receivable, and we know it's coming in there, it's coming a little late. It's, you know, and I'm perfectly collecting all of it, but there's penalties that come in there, there's interest that's included when it's assessed to the county that kind of offset that, but it would change the cash position.
And then that's, you brought up the penalties. Is that, say, your six months, and you have to pay. So month, beginning of month two, you get, what, five percent added as a penalty for being late?
Our penalty is five percent of the past due back ones.
Okay, and then the next month, I don't pay. Is that total, and then another five percent on that?
The, it's the
Cumulative.
Cumulative less prior late charges, so it doesn't do penalty on top of penalty, but if you're if your past due amount was, let's just say it was a hundred dollars in month one, then you would get a five percent late fee, so you'd get five dollars. Then, so then your balance is a hundred and five. Let's say the next month, it's another hundred dollars. Your penalty would be ten dollars, a hundred and a hundred, it won't do five percent on the prior five dollar late fees.
No, 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 I think it's a hundred, then a hundred and five, and then it's five percent of a hundred and five added on?
Five percent of the hundred plus the next hundred, if that referred in the example using the same bill overall for easy math. But it's cumulative, but it's cumulative less any penalties that have been added on. That's backed out of the penalty calculation.
In essence, if it's a hundred bucks every month, you're getting assessed an additional five bucks every month?
More, because it's cumulative. So if you didn't, if you didn't pay it, in that twelfth, in that twelfth month, you'd be getting five percent on twelve hundred dollars, if we're gonna use a hundred dollars a month. So it adds up.
Thank you.
So penalty after month one was five dollars, after month two is ten dollars, after month three it's
And then sixty by the end of the year.
Sixty, and then, so you got all those. If you're not being penalized five percent on your last previous month's penalty amount, you're getting assessed on whatever your cumulative utility usage is. We're still billing for
So if it was a hundred bucks a month, in month twelve, you'd be like sixty bucks?
Yeah. And then the prior month, but the prior month, you would have been penalized.
What happened?
Month eleven would be fifty-five, so it's a cumulative amount.
So by the end of twelve months, it'd be sixty plus fifty-five plus fifty plus forty-five plus forty plus seventy-five plus, I can't do that math that quickly, but so you're being assessed for twelve hundred plus twelve months worth of five percent late fees.
And take that at times. So maybe if it's a hundred dollars. Example isn't, unless you're just an electrical only therapist, you know, your bill is usually higher than a hundred dollars, you've got all the services.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Graham. We appreciate your presentation tonight. It's been very active tonight. Moving on to I A B Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four seven Declaration of Local Energy Declaration.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, as I mentioned earlier. Foster, yeah, if you want to join us, Foster, that'd be great, because one of the biggest elements of the local emergency declaration has involved something near and dear to Foster's professional hire, which is the Mayfair Bus Station. So just in a quick summary, in June of twenty twenty-four, City Council passed the resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero three six, which declared a local state of emergency, and that granted a certain number of powers to staff at the City Council to protect public safety and protect to the greatest extent possible public infrastructure. And I think I can safely say that overall, it was a success of the response to the local emergency and the part of local officials and city staff was successful. We reported no injuries, no serious private property damage as part of the local event, and I want to take an opportunity really quickly to thank all the staff who responded within a lot of extra hours, made sure that the community had all the necessary communication information they needed to make good, safe decisions. The initial resolution that was passed is still technically in effect, and so should be rescinded at the time that council feels it's appropriate to rescind that resolution and declare the local emergency status terminated. That doesn't mean that we're not dealing with the after effects. It simply means that the emergency scenario is no longer present, and that's the point we find ourselves at right now. So with the resolution for our City Council tonight, would end the declaration of emergency, which just takes away some of those emergent abilities that we were granted over the last two months to respond without having to call emergency city council meetings and things like that. And so that's the action that's been for us tonight. Foster's here, and maybe Foster, if you could just talk through a little bit about the Mayfair Park situation. So what's in the memos tonight outlines a little bit of the park response and the park actions, actions of mitigating the damage at Mayfair Park, at River Park, also Long Streets and Middle Road Streets. A lot of that recovery work has already been completed. If you could, Foster, just talk us about the bus station, Mayfair Park.
Sure. So staff worked diligently to bypass Mail Park, as you're aware. We only probably lasted, I think it was about twelve hours worth of sewage at that station before we could get the bypass up and going. Since then, we worked with the company. We were bypassing that station and then working on a plan. We put in a temporary control panel. We replaced a generator, put in some temporary pumps. We ordered new pumps that should be coming in the next few months, and so the, as of last week, the bus station is up and running on its own, and and we are working with our engineer to potentially relocate that bus station to get it out of the floodplain, or at least raise it up at its current location. We're looking at, you know, options, and we're trying to get funding for that as well to, you know, so not just try, you know, paying for it out of the city's pocket, but also looking at funding options to help help get it to that location. So so I just want to thank all staff, want to thank the council for helping us with this declaration. And I want to thank all departments, because all departments have pitched in with this, with not only the flooding, but also the wind damage that we had back in, it's in July. There are a lot of trees down, electric wires down, and staff really stepped up and did a great job. So we have a good, good staff here at the city.
Thank you, Foster. Anybody have any questions? I, yeah, we did see that bus station also looked like it looked a little higher, but it hasn't been raised yet.
No, it has not. It has not. There is a brand new generator. The other generator was was zero, we weren't able to replace or update it, but it costs too much.
Okay, and if that doesn't get relocated, is there is a plan to raise it up then?
Well, we're working on that. We're working on that. We're looking at options, you know. Does it, does it make sense to just raise it at its current location? Yes, we could do that. Can we move it? Can we potentially get rid of it? I don't know. You know, I mean, what are, you know, we're looking at a lot of different options.
One last quick question. How high did that water go over that station, do we know?
Um, there are pictures of it. It was definitely, I think there was only the, there's like a mast out there. You could see that signal, and that was it. So.
Anybody else have any questions? Now, I'll undertake a motion to rescind Resolution R twenty twenty-four dash zero three six for any current local emergency declaration. Thank you, Councilmember Schley, recycled by Councilmember
Williams.
Williams. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Moving on, ordinance sixteen, first reading, amending the city charter. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I mentioned earlier, the Charter Commission does have some openings on it, while they only generally need once a year. This last meeting was very exciting one. Some years, the Charter Commission just looks at the charter and says, yeah, everything looks okay, we're comfortable with it. Last week's Charter Commission meeting, they wanted to look at two specific sections of the city charter. So you look at the city charter, it's the first thirteen chapters of the source city code. So it's kind of like the Bill of Rights for our city constitution. And it addresses everything from what powers the city council has to how the council is going to be made up, to when the meetings are to be held, et cetera, et cetera. And back in twenty twenty-two, the Charter Commission had first looked at two different sections of city, of the city charter, section two point oh five and section six point zero four. And at that time, had recommended changes to both of those sections via ordinance. It was ordinance five ninety-five, and Sheriff one remembers it very well. And City Council at that time recommended tabling the ordinance. Council wanted more specificity to the amendments to section two point zero five. So a quick rehashing of both of these sections. Section six point zero four deals with purchases and contracts, and effectively the language change that the Charter Commission recommended was the addition of a very brief sentence regarding per state statute. So when it comes to the bidding process, the state legislature will occasionally change the limits at which we can't rely on quotes, or we have to actually go up for a bid. And so instead of amending the city charter every time the state legislature does that, if we add simple clause to the final sentence of that code reading following state statute, that allows the city to be a little bit more flexible. So that was six oh four. There was no council opposition or concern with that. With section two point zero five, this section of city charter is very, very specific, and it deals with vacancies in the council. And it does happen every once in a while, that the city council does have to consider declaring a council seat vacant. It's happened two times in the last five years, and the city charter right now is a little bit vague on the these circumstances by building up to which this becomes a, like, consider a seat vacant. And so the Charter Commission has come back and proposed language that's a little bit more specific, that would say that a council member, which would include the mayor. Yes.
Because it says here the mayor could make the call.
Well, the mayor and City Council can can determine together what the, if it's good cause or not. So in the declaration of the vacancy, the resolution that council and the mayor would consider would be what's good cause for missing three to the twenty-five percent.
What if it is the mayor?
Yep, and
And that's included as a council member.
Correct.
Separate as the mayor.
That's correct. And it's a great question, because they are mentioned separately in here, but earlier in the, or elsewhere in the charter, I should say, the council is specifically defined as being made up of six council members and the mayor. And so when it comes to declaring a vacancy, and I had a conversation with the city attorney about this to make sure that that was clear, and because the definition of a council member includes the mayor, any one of the city council members who has an absence from duties greater than twenty-five percent of their assigned duties and meetings over any six-month period during that council member's term without good cause could be, their seat could be declared vacant. So specificity was included by the Charter Commission. It does include the mayor and any city council member. And because of technology and because of staff keeping track of it, if there were ever a concern, we could certainly go back and reference who was attending what, right? And then good cause could be determined. And instead of being very detailed in saying, you know, health-related reasons is not a good cause, or maybe it is a good cause, we leave it at good cause. And realistically, by the point, if there ever is a serious concern, presume that the mayor is having conversations with, you know, may reach out to the council, or the council, or may reach out to staff and say, you know, I don't know that I can do this anymore, right? And then sometimes you get a resignation instead of before it gets to this point, but this provides a little bit more specificity.
I know this is nitpicking, but it says and for absence, does that assume that you have to be physically present, i.e. with technology, does soon come?
So the, this is a fair question, and the absence from duties would be if you, let's say, as a council member, you can't be in person, and so you call in. According to state statute right now, you're not allowed to participate in that meeting, so you can't vote. So you could be there, but you can't fulfill your duties because you're a non-voting member. So if you were to call in and say, I want to listen to the conversation, but I can't be there to vote, that council could decide, but I would argue that that would be considered an absence from duty.
So in other words, you have to be physically present?
Yes, or whatever, if the extension at some point defines and redefines public meeting and says that you could, like they did during the emergency order of COVID, where everything could be virtual, and then once that was rescinded, then everyone had to be a person. If the legislature ever said, look, we're in the twenty-first century, we should be able to conduct, public body should be able to conduct virtually, and they define that statute, then you could say, yeah, physical presence is not required because state statute says it's not required. Yeah. Good question.
Anybody need questions? Otherwise, we have Otherwise, we have two actions ahead of us here. First one is to conduct, first reading of ordinance six ten, amending section two point zero five and six point zero four of the city charter. Any volunteers to read it?
Reading.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. I can invite Councilmember Dewey. Other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have. The next motion is to call a public hearing related to ordinance six ten to take place on October twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four, six thirty meeting. So thank you, Councilmember Sullivan, segmented by Councilmember Williams. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? The eyes have. Moving on to reports and items of appreciation, council members, is your opportunity to share what's going on with your commissions and your community. Always a servant, Councilmember. I've got nothing, nothing tonight. Councilmember Schneider.
First, congratulations, Chief Steer, and since the last council meeting, I attended the planning commission meeting on the twelfth. H R A meeting on the eighteenth, and I participated in a region nine development tour on the nineteenth. Just wanted to let you know, there's a leaseholder county officials meeting coming up Wednesday in Lee Center. And another reminder that future of the city forum is still open through the twenty seventh, so. If you haven't participated, please put your input in. I have a region nine development full board meeting on October ninth, and another planning commission meeting on October tenth.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
We're mediating tonight on the staff production, reengaged negotiations with Cambria, which is the property on sixty nine. And it's an amendment to the planning commission, there's only permission, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Swanberg.
Yeah, again, congratulations to Chief Steer and congratulations to Ms. Maryam Beck. That's amazing and awesome.
Thank you. Councilmember Dewey.
Yeah, I. I attended an M R B T meeting and. Reader's Digest version, the La Sourd, the St. Peter medical run that they were planning because Mayo moved is still in the works. Nothing solid yet. They're back to their regular fairs now that the summer's over. This electric bus thing, they, they got two electric buses ordered, and when they ordered them, they were told two hundred miles was the range. Well, now, in the summer, it's sixty miles. And in the winter, it's thirty six. So they're doing, what they're doing is exploring, saying. I don't want them. Now, they don't know if they can do it, because in the summer, they would have to, for the first shift. They could only drive, because they go, their, their, per bus, it's seventy five to a hundred miles a day. So they would have to park the thing for at least an hour. Before they could take it back out to complete the route, so there, obviously, nobody on the board was very happy. And we'll wait and see what happens.
Interesting information. Thank you, Councilmember Dewey. Councilmember Williams.
I'm pleased to hear about Chief Steer's recognition. It's nice to be recognized for that. Also, when. We were hearing about the flooding, and then we, we did some work, and we weren't the ones doing heavy lifting, we just do the paperwork. Appreciate the staff and all the heavy lifting that they did, and the worst we felt was going over the bump on our way out of town, so. Thank you for all that staff, make sure they know, it's well appreciated that we didn't have to. We didn't feel much impact of the flooding, like some of the hearings.
Thank you. I just have a couple of items. Over the weekend, we had the opportunity to celebrate the life of Chief of Police Bruce Kelly, former chief, he spent many decades here. Serving our community. I want to thank the city staff, I want to thank our police for their attendance, fire department. The outpouring of their support was gracious. I had the privilege of being with Bruce the last couple hours of his life, and it was a very moving experience, and I'm missing. So we celebrated Bruce over the weekend, and this week we celebrated the career of our new police chief, Clark Steer, so. I'll take my opportunity to congratulate her when I see her this week, so thank you. With that, we will close the meeting. Now, do we have a motion, any motion to close the meeting? Thank you, Councilmember, all those in favor?